Or to be the play, put a new place. Is that able to do, I think it's giving a one month, he still unable to move all the thing out. Ah, but we just doing that in one day. So, uh, just look a lot tonight. The very reason of our club can be this new venue. It's because all of us, we are, we, we willing to contribute and support for all of you. So every time we trying ourselves to step on the stage. And we take part in, in the Toastmaster. We learn, we getting our, we learn for lesson. We listen each other's story. And sometimes, one or small story can touch someone and inspire someone's heart. So, the second part is inspiring the heart in our team. So I, I would like to say that in the Toastmaster Mentoring. Is the part to inspiring heart for other. Why I say so? Because when we are new to joining Toastmaster. We need a guide for other. At this time, the Toastmaster Mentoring can be. We have a mentor, they are sharing their time to guiding us, to inspire us to come on the stage. Many of us, when we, when we just came over here, we are at the stage. All of us were scared in that, uh, we are don't know how to give it the public speaking. We are not good well, or something, or, or they had a mindset that we scared, we cannot do that. But mentor is a person who help us, who did not bring us to forward, but they are aside with us. They help us to, to go along, to go for, to go further. So, in today, our team is spreading light and inspiring heart. So, I would like to pass a message for all of you. We using our speech, our time to share our own story, to, to learn, to inspire other. We are a person to spreading the light, to inspire in heart. Without further, I would like to announce that our meeting is start. And before I pass to our T M E tonight. I would like to briefly introduce her. Okay, she oh, she's a win, bright and cheerful. When, whenever she go, the happiness is around. So I'm just surprised that, uh, before, uh, before, before that I realized that I know her after I joined Toastmaster. But I just realized that, actually, we are joining a set online meeting before. Uh, and maybe my memory felt I didn't remember at the first time. After, after few years, I just realized that, uh, I think because. She looked even more beautiful from that time, so I cannot, cannot know that time.
Give more later.
So, please tell me, welcome our Toastmaster of the evening tonight. Jojo Te, Sucher Relationship Board, over again.
Good evening, friends. Good evening, our best Toastmaster, Club President, and also our district officer. Welcome to Sutra Budama 134 meeting tonight. Please give yourself a round of applause. Why, because we are the first group in this new venue. And also for our online member, you are the first group to witness. We are in the meeting at the new venue also. So, again, give, give ourselves a round of applause. To clean and to sell all the things, well done members. And now, I would like to start our meeting today. Today, our team today is spreading light, inspiring hearts. As we celebrate deliver Tika Bali, the fasting of light. Let us remind that the light is not only brightens our world surroundings. But also illuminate our path forwards. In life, we all go through moment of chaos and also uncertainty. But no matter how long the tunnel makes it. There is always light at the end of the tunnel. A light of hope, courage, and also new beginning. Each of us have the power to spread the light. A kind word, a truthful mind, a helpful gesture, a happy hand. That you can illuminate someone's days and also inspire their path. The provider you remind us again, the light always can traverse over darkness. And be compassionate and positive within. We can brighter the world around us. So tonight, let us shine our inner lights. To uplift one another and also to inspire hearts. And also to remind everybody that even the small, the smallest sparks can make a big difference. Now, let us start our Sutra Budama and also Toastmaster journey. Next thing. Since we doesn't have any guests today, so I think we can skip the history of Toastmaster. And next, let's go to the pathway. In Toastmaster, there is three structures. Three main segment, which is prepared speech. Prepared speech session lets members to deliver their speech and practice. And practice conquer the field and also stand on the stage. Secondly, table topic session. This session is known as impromptu speech. All audience member and guests to get a chance to speak on their own speed and also best on the topic selected on the spot. Lastly, evaluations. Evolutions is practice us active listening and also how to give our example feedback. It will practice us the beautiful of language. Next, I would like to introduce our role player team today. For our online role player and also for our online role players. Please wave on the camera so that everyone can recognize you. For our physical members, so like the way I call your name, please stand up. You deserve the applause. Okay, next, first, we will have our such a. Our such a, uh, we just take a little, a little to eat. To eat, you know, and give us the progressions and also our dedicated to vice president memberships. Today, we start our meeting privately to ensure our meeting starts strong. And that, we have our IT girl. IT girl, the master, ITM, Nessa. The first woman, understand our chapter president's medal. Claire is the first woman president of Sutra Budama Toastmaster Club. She is the one who freshen everything around so smoothly or not. So any technical problem, don't worry, player will be here and solve it. Next, lastly, our title today. We got two roles today, which is if that, strategy relationship fight. It is an SEO professional and also a delicious director, respect. He show us a true example of continuous learning spirit. Meanwhile, we also have our Toastmaster, Henry Twang. He just reaches no more than six months, right? And also back, he has been actively taking two roles for continuously three meetings. A big round of applause to our hand review for his presentation and also for women. Moving on, we will have our art cover tonight. Our art cover tonight is Pemmarani. Pemmarani Presentation Mastering Four and also, and also our live talk, our live talk today. Thank you for your thank you, Peter. To monitor, to monitor the assembly as well as impromptu use of language. We have our Presentation Mastering One, Mass by Handburns. A new mother and also our past grammarian teacher. Everyone, you all should try grammar rules at least six months once. But how can we, but how can we become the great grammarists? Let's find out from Max today. And next, I would like to invite Max to share with us the work of the day to you. Over to you, Max.
Thank you, Jojo. Uh, is, is my voice clear? Just, just to confirm. Is it audible?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, you're Toastmasters and yes. As grammarian, my role today is to pay close attention to all speakers. Monitor the accuracy of their language. I will take note of any improper language. Including misused words, incomplete sentences, mispronunciation, poor sentence structures and grammatical mistakes. I will also point out any excellent use of words, phrases and sentences. And as grammarian today, it's also my duty to introduce the word of the day and idiom of the day. So for today's meeting, in line with our team's spreading light, inspiring hearts. The word that I've chosen for today is illuminate. Illuminate is, is a word, word means, uh, an action word. So, the, the meaning is, is to light, illuminate means to light, to light on something. So the example sentence that where you can use illuminate is, for example, floodlights illuminated the stadium. Floodlight, floodlight system is the lights in the stadiums. The light stands in the stadiums, so floodlights illuminated the stadium, that means it lights up the stadium. Or you can use illuminate, um, in another meaning, which is to make something much more clearer. For example, an explanation much more clear, so. For example, uh, the study helped to eliminate the problems the team was facing. And the idiom of the day, uh, today is light at the end of the tunnel. And the meaning is when you go through a very long period of difficulty and you can actually see the, the end of that difficulty is coming. So, uh, the example here is, uh, we haven't solved the problem yet. But we are beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Means you can, you can see the problem is gonna end soon. So I, I encourage every members to use, uh, the word of the day and idiom of the day frequently as possible in today's meeting. I think Jojo already started using both of them just now. So, back to you, uh, T M E.
Thank you, our the chance of the day today, Max. Because and that, we encourage you to use the word of the day, illuminate and also idiom of the day. The day, lights at the end of the tunnel, use as long, as many as you can. Thank you so much. And next, I would like to introduce our general evaluator, distinguished Toastmaster, Bissimo. She, she is an inspiring and also experienced Toastmaster. She will take and eagle eyes throughout the meeting and conduct the evaluation session later. So please look how, how experienced Toastmaster is. We learn together, no worries. Again, next, let's move to the next section. Before we move into the next session, may I invite our guest, C Y O, to introduce herself. C Y, are you there?
Chingy, Erica.
Erica, I guess. Oh, Chingy, Chingy, good day, Chingy. Welcome to our Toastmaster meeting. And next.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am Chingy from Joho Baru Toastmaster Club.
Thank you, our officer, our Erica, to join the meeting today. Please give her a applause. Without further ado, let's move on to the most important segment in Toastmaster meeting, which is prepared speech session. Our first speaker.
Yes, she has a plan, so so.
It's okay. Time to get penalty, thank you. Our first speaker in this evening will be deliver his level one. Level one Presentation Mastering Introductions to Workability and Body Language. The purpose to practice, the purpose of this project is for the members to practice using workability. Or body language to enhance a speech. The time allocated for this speech is five to seven minutes. May I have timer, timer to demonstrate the technique simple with me? At the five minutes, the green bell will be shot. At the sixth minute, the yellow bell will be shot. At seven minutes, the red light will be displayed. At seven minutes and fifteen seconds, a bell will be shot. The evaluator for this project is. Dynamic Leadership Board, Wu Wei Jing. The speech title is, When Silence Became My Comfort Zoo. When silence became my comfort zoo. Over to you, our first customer, Henry Twang.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Henry Twang. And today, I'm going to share with you all a story of when silence became one of my comfort zone. Yeah, I have a lot of comfort zone, so don't be surprised. I also start from beginning. Okay, so, all of this start, uh, from my primary, primary time. During my primary school, I used to be a very talkative person. I always like to split over the room and like to talk a lot. Until one day, I just realized. I talk a lot until I accidentally reveal the secret between only me and one of my best friend. And after that incident. My best friend started to keep distance from me. And there is one thought flew into my mind, I thought that. If talkative could cause a lot of pain, then why not just be, just remain silence? Yeah, and then at that time, I start to move walls. So. As, as I start to build those. I feel like the walls are the walls that make me safe, but always keep the others out. So. As time goes on, I hide behind the walls for a very long time and I didn't speak to anyone. Until when I stepped into my foundation years. Everyone already have their group of friend. But me, just sitting alone at a corner, eating alone at the cafeteria. Always when I saw the others was chatting with each other with a smile on their face. And talking jokes with each other and sharing their story. I always want to approach them, but the time when I approached that, my voice trapped. And my feet feel very heavy, like something is pulling me backward. And that time. I thought that, never mind. You don't need others to, you only others to talk with you. If you talk more, the more mistake you will become, you will make more mistake and. If you don't talk with each other, that shows that you are independent enough. But in the deep of my heart, I feel that this is not normal. And after that time, when I go back to my book, writing in my bed. And I studied in, in, on, on the cinema and I think that. Is it normal to be like this? Is it normal to remain silent? But at the end, I made one conclusion. One time, I would graduate. And when I graduate, if I keep on silence and when I graduate, the, all the thing that I bring is just a degree with emptiness. With no story, with no one else to talk with, to share your experience. And the next day, I make one important decision. The decision I made is. I want to step off my comfort zone because as I, the, the longer time I hide behind the walls. The silence has become one of my comfort zone, so. It also matters more, I just say hi to, to the friend beside me. Because I thought that, when I say hi to the others, the others will normally keep talking to me, but. The truth is very different from what I expected. When I say hi to them, they give me the warmest mouth and the warmest response that illuminates me. Yeah. And after, after. After the, after I start, I step out of my comfort zone, I found out that. It is actually quite interesting to share your stories with others. And there is also a time I, uh, decided to take the initiative to start up a conversation with others. And also, uh, to create a study group with, with my friends. Because I believe that there, there will be the light at the end of the tunnel. And so. And so, it is, uh. It is, uh, like, expected from, from what I think that. Once I, once I step out of my comfort zone. Others starting to approach, approach me. And they all start to share their story and they also. Start to. Have their, have their. They also start to, uh, give, lend a hand to me. So at the end, I realized something. I realized that actually silence is not the most scariest thing in the world. And making mistake also to say not the most scariest thing in the world. But the most scariest thing in the world is hiding behind your mistake. So. I believe that. Everyone of, everyone here also like to remain silent although, although. Uh, you are already very as well experienced, but sometimes you stay at a moment and, uh, think alone, right? So. And me, me also, I also like, like to be silent, but don't make silence become one of your habit. Because. If you remain silence, no one else will know what you are thinking. You must be courageous to share out your, your thoughts. And that's all for my talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Great things never comes from confidence, yeah, outstanding and keep shining, okay? Thank you so much, Harry, for your speech. We learn a lot. And next, I would like to invite our second speaker today, which is. Which is our second speaker, but deliver her, but deliver her Presentation Mastering Level Five, Prepare to Speech. The purpose of this. Project is for the members to prepare, grow, ethic, develop and present a longer speech. The title, the title of the speech is The Power of Progress From Classroom to Rover Stage. Our speaker today is Presentation Mastering Four, Hemarani Munishami. Before we, before to invite our speaker today, can I have timer to demonstrate the timing simple for this? The speech. The speech is eighteen minutes to twenty-two, twenty-two minutes. At eighteen minutes, the green light will be shot. At twenty minutes, the yellow light will be shot. And twenty-two minutes, the red light will be shot. Will be displayed. And next, I would like to invite our speaker today, Presentation Mastering Four, Hemarani Munishami. The Power of Progress From Classroom to Rover Stage. From classroom to Rover stage. Over to you, Hema.
Okay, thank you, Jojo. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster and chair's guests. Have you ever had a moment where you wondered, am I really making a difference? Do you think that you're really making a difference in other person's life? Someone?
Yes.
So maybe, yes, that's great. Me as a vocational teacher in hairstyling for my students with special needs. That questions once a cold in my heart and my mind many times. Every day, I step into a classroom not filled with the textbooks and formulas, but with the mirrors, combs, and coal. I face students who struggle with a learning disability, with lack of intelligence, but because the world often fails. Me as a teacher also fails to understand how they learn, how they feel and how they express themselves. Hope that my students, each of them is unique. Can one day see themselves not through their weakness, but through their potential? Yes, through the years, I can see the progress among the them. But over the time, I discover something powerful. Progress isn't about the perfection, it's about transform, transformation. And tonight, I want to share the power of progress, a journey from classroom to global stages and. How character development and emotional growth become the heart of everything I do. This evening, I invite you to join me spreading light and inspiring hearts. Because sometimes even the smallest spark can ignite and fire up. It's all begun with a boy named Ayman. He was quiet, brittle and rarely made eye contact. Writing even a single sentence was a mountain climb for him, yes, it's really hard for him. One day during the practical class, I placed a mannequin head before him and asked him, had a go. That, it and hesitate, I told him softly, yes, you can do it. We try to improve ourselves. Just feel the rhythm playing, come be the mannequin. And hands moved awkwardly, at first, something changed. He started to smile, the cold become his confidence. Yes, for a learning disability, just with the cold, it can be a confident for him. Then he finished, I said, Ayman, this is beautiful. Because the result is not about what is about, but how he delivered. And for the first time, he looked up, eyes shining. I see profit, then we focus on what students can do. We illuminate what they never believed they could. Have you ever had someone who believed in you and you didn't believe in yourself? It was happened to me and people say you can do it, me and as adult, I say I cannot do it. But that's the light at the end of the tunnel that every learner deserves to see. To light of belief, hope and possibility. Me as a teacher for these students is a really powerful tool and medium for me to. Bring up their character and their emotions. Then he finished. That, and I found that teaching hairstyling is just about creating beauty. Or is about building inner beauty among my students. My students often struggle with emotional control. Frustration when seeing a style doesn't work, anger with the hair tangles or tears when the curls collapse. Yes, it's happened when the boys, especially boys, might do the hairstyling for the ladies or girls hairstyles. That's why I introduce. To late, reading techniques and every of the task, simple affirmations like, I am. I can try again, one student, Afik, will often throw his tools when things went wrong. But when I tried to use the emotional regulations sessions, it's really worked out and I can see the difference among my students. I thought, he, the pause, breathe. I thought he, the pause, breathe and say, it's okay, I can fix it. Because styling is about not the perfection, but it's about the art we can see from the students. Over the time, it's almost turned into quite confident and that was, I thought that teaching emotional control is. As important as a teaching hat control, because when the heart is calm. The hands create wonders and it's also happened to us, majority of us. Our parents that we can see when the art is calm, we can do the wonders to our kids at home. When last time you gave the permission to make the mistake and try again. So this is the small questions I would like to throw to everyone over there. When was the last time you gave yourself permission to make mistakes and try again? Anyone? Anyone of you doing some a mistake and let's say, yes, it's okay. Never mind, over that time, I can improve myself. Mistake is just a lesson that I can improve. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly because progress because the movement we forgive ourselves and we choose to grow. So as an adult learner, we have to know the character, the emotional is very important. And when come back to my, to help my students to learn teamwork and empathy is really important. Where I introduce project best learning. I organize a community project, free haircut for hope and especially this song for my school, male teachers. Okay, my students practice not only styling but also kindness. Patience and professionalism before they enter their real life working world. One of the name, one of the boy is farid who wants who struggle with the anger issues. Gently comb a male teacher and say, don't worry sir, actually they will call him check group, I will make you more great and smart. That teachers means the male teachers, they always looking what? They can see the changes of the character and the emotions that among my students. Previous and after I run the project basically. Watching him, I felt my eyes water because this is the target that my I found. And that was not just skill development, it was a character development. Again, in my class, I focus to the character development and together come along with the emotional control. Years later, when I stood on an international stage representing my school and. As an outstanding vocational teacher, my heart whispered, this is just about my achievement. But this belongs to every student who found their light in my classroom. Yes, because them I can explore, I can learn, I can be myself, I I done so many things to. Improve my things at the same time, I can give the light to my students. From the mirrors of my training saloon to the bright lights to of global recognition. The journey was never about fame, it was about proving that occasional education can transform life. Especially for the learning disability students when we nurture both skills and souls. And I stood there humble and realizing that every step, every struggle. That was a light at the end of the tunnel that guided me all along away. What if progress wasn't measured by how what fast we success? But by how deeply we touch lives of every student, especially learning disability students. As educator, leaders and mentors, our role is not just to teach techniques, especially for teachers. It's to illuminate lives. We don't just shape hairstyles. But we shape mindset, yes, the mindset for the learning disability students. Students is very vital in the working life. Okay, we don't just train heads, we try hard, every snip, every curse, every breath carries a story of growth. Patience and perseverance, because in every stand of air, there's a reflection of confidence. And in every student, a spark waiting to shine. So I ask everyone here. Who could be inspiring right now? Without even you are realizing it. Anyone?
No, no.
Who could you be inspiring right now? I mean, for me, it's my students, even their learning disabilities, I always looking wonder at them. How come they can learn fast? How come they can so many things in a magic way? So. It's a ready, people say it's really blessed for me to have them in my life. And give opportunity for them to service as a teacher. Because when we spread light and inspire us, we create rippers of change that reach. Far beyond what we can see. So tonight, I leave you with the three lessons that have illuminate my path. See firstly, see the person, not the problem. So when I see my students, I see, see them as a golden opportunity for me that I can mold myself to improve them. Where behind every struggle lies potential waiting to shine. Secondly, is progress takes hard, not immediately we can success or progress. Skills can be taught, but courage and compassion must be nurtured. And third, and lastly, it will be, your life is contagious. The more you shine, the more others find the light at the end of the tunnel. So my dear Toastmaster members, as you go back to your home or your communities or your workplace. Remember this, the power of progress is not about reaching to the top, but lifting others as we climb. Let's continue to spread light, let's continue to inspire others. And together, let's illuminate the world one soul at a time. Thank you and over to you today. Thank you, Hemar. Hemar have remind us that to treat every truth, every truth according their characters. And let them keep trying, just let us try to make any mistake as long as we learn from them. A teacher is a light and guides students throughout the darkness and. After, after Hemar's speech, I can feel that they are so lucky to have you. Thank you, our teachers, Hemar, for your speech today. And next, I would like to invite our next speaker, which is. Which is traditionally relationship by best law. He will deliver the presentation mastery. He has delivered his presentation mastery level one, introduction to vocal variety and body language. The third is Toastmaster BJ and the speech today is Take It or Leave It. Take it or leave it. Over to you, Max.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the evening. Hello, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmasters. First of all, I will ask you a question. Do you feel stressed? What is stress? Stress definitely matters, couldn't eat well and you also cannot, cannot sleep well, basically it's not good. Any Toastmasters stress made us stomach it, also cannot give a idea before you giving your speech. Okay, what giving you stress? Basically, I think is maybe in your workplace, uh you might get criticism by your boss. Or rejection by your big clients or maybe your family dispute with your partner, whatever. So these are the stress that in our life. So fellow Toastmasters, how do we release our stress? How do you really release your stress? Let me share you a story. There was a young man once went to a beach. And he was of, he was looking a very good spot to see the, the. The sea horizon, a very good spot, he sat on the sand. Alone going to the beach for one reason, I also don't know. Maybe but from his face, we know he was depressed, stressful. He just went to the beach and sat on the, on the sand and looking at the horizon. Feel the ocean breeze. Take a deep breath, yeah, alone sitting there. Soon after, then this young man saw is the right corner go, go one fisherman. Return from the sea. So the fisherman tied, tied up his boat, then came down to the beach. They also find a good spot, a good, good view spot. And yeah, swept away the all those small roads, then also sat down on the sand, take up. A, a small barn and also the small bottle of the water also doing the same thing and also looking. The sundown, looking at sundown, the horizon, the New York is, is so beautiful. Two of them sitting in the same place, the fisherman just uh ten feet away from this young man. Okay, two of them are looking at the same screen. Half an hour later, then this young man started the conversation with this fisherman. He asked, April, how was your harvest today? How was that? Today weather, you know, is, is a bit rough, not so good, it's not good as the normal. So, bro, then why are you here alone now? Then this young man replied, yeah, alone, you know, time, life is sometimes tough. I need to find a moment to take a break, take a deep breath. So, and the young man asked the fisherman, hey, ask you a question. Why, why you, I see you are about the same age to me, why you become, decided to become a fisherman? Why not, bro? Any suggestion? Yes. You should do what you know. You should take a luggage, you know, fisherman, how much you can earn income. You should take the luggage, bro, go to the town. And find a good job, a cool job, um. A beautiful office with the air conditioning, the environment is very good. It's rather than, every day you sunburn. What, you should go there, ah, enjoy. Oh, okay, hmm, sounds great, huh? So next. Then, oh, with your charming face, definitely, I'm sure, in the town you can find a good girl, then two of you get married. Then two of you can find an apartment in the town, maybe it's a level fifty, wow, super high, you can enjoy the super view. You can see the town view, if you are keen enough, you can see the mountain view. Wow, sounds great, huh? Fantastic, bro. So, hmm, so what's the next I can be? On next, with your hard work, dedication to your work, you will easily get promoted, you get promotion. Now you can become, and you soon you can become the manager, then it's only here department, G A or maybe C E O. Oh, so great, man. Oh, sounds fantastic, huh? So what is the next? Oh, next up, next you have made a bundle of money. You can retire at the age of fifty. Wow, so you and your family and your kids find a vacant land. In front of the seaside, ah, like this. You find a vacant land, you build a bedroom, it's either one, two, three level, anything you want. So you can enjoy your life, you can, wow, so enjoy, then you can calm down and all. Come to, to the beach, sit on the, on, on the sand and chit chat with the friends, your close friend, close, close friend you want. So enjoying man like this, huh? Like this, what we are talking, so relaxed, bro. Oh, April, young man, huh? Really great, and you know, is this what you want? Is this, is this, is this your dream, this our, yeah, situation? Yeah, so what is the difference between that and now we are doing? The young man was frozen start. He realized all the, all his pursuit of all those physical and tangible things. Are actually leading him to where he has already had. At that moment, his frustration, now worried about his workplace, workplace, our clients are, are meter away, all those problems are meter away. He realizes, life, yes, still need to work hard, but working hard are not ultimate. I'm not, it's not everything. The importantly is your, your inner thought, is your inside, not outside, not the tangible physical things that created by the capitalists. No, don't let by them. It's about inner yourself, your peaceful mind. Every one of us, at the end of our station, I go to this peaceful harmony life. So life, we, we can detect everything, we also can live it. When the time is needed, you just need it. When you are truly living away, nothing can bring you down. Let's enjoy the life, life is just an experience back to the Toastmaster, thank you.
Inside was sharing as inspiring sharing today. Okay, and that's our, our speakers, professors, speeches, session have come to the end. And now I would like to invite our timer to give a timer report for our speaker.
Okay, so. For me, uh, the first speaker, Andy, uh, spoke for six minute and sixteen second. Max Law spoke for seven minute and forty three second. And Hemarani spoke for eleven minute and fifty seven second. So, uh, the next floor and Hemarani, I'm about, I'm a zimba for the voting session.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And now we have no who, who will get the best speaker today. And next. Next, we will go to our second very exciting session, which is. Table topic session. Yes, and now I would like to invite our table topic master today. Our table topic master today, Toastmaster Jana Siliza for conduct this session. Over to you, Jana.
Jana to share by.
Jana, over to you, you are muted.
She want to share by her own or?
Yes, she want to share by her own. Jana, you can share the screen now.
Jana, you are muted.
You can text, so, and she is. Sorry, I am muted. So I want to share the screen, so uh I hope that the host can disable the. Uh, screen sharing first, before I share my own screen.
Yes, you can share.
Okay, everyone can uh see my screen now.
Okay, everyone can uh see my screen now.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, good evening, uh fellow toast masters and guests. For uh for table topic tonight, I created the questions based on our uh team tonight. Which is uh spreading likes and inspiring hearts. Uh for your informations, light actually symbolize the kindness, hope and the power of positivity, positivity. Okay, uh I believe that each of us has the uh ability to uh brighten someone's day. Through a smile, a kind words, or an act of courage. So, for today, topic uh questions is on the spreading likes and inspiring hearts, okay? For this table topic, you have chance to speak around one to two minutes. On an impromptu questions related to the team. So for the time timer, if the green light will appear at one minute. And then yellow at one and half minutes. And last one red at two minutes. Okay, so. Okay, so if you can see my screen now, I have six questions. Okay, each number uh hides a questions related to our team. So anyone want to volunteer for the first table topic speaker? Yes.
Tony.
Tony, okay, Tony, you want to try?
Number two.
Okay, so to you want to try, question number two, yeah? So this is the uh question number two. So I will read the questions, what does it mean to you to be the like in someone else's life? Okay, I repeat again, what does it mean to you to be the like in someone else's life? Over to you, Tony.
Okay, so, good evening, you know, my master.
Good evening.
So. What is uh become by life? I think it's my family, my, my father, my mother and my brother. Because actually, anytime I will. Face some mistake or problem, I only will, I will talk to my. Family first and then. This one, this can make me to how to solve, not only solve the problem. The, the problem, uh the important is. It can make me to release my strength or. How can I go to further? I think so is more important. So, next one is actually is. Uh, I will try to. Manage and how I can. Go to further and how I can. Go. Where I want to go. So, my family is my. I can say this one, uh he can make. He's also in my net, my life and for a long time. So, this for, this for, um. This for me, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony. So, eh, any other volunteer for the next questions?
Henry.
Henry, Henry, you want to try?
I'm gonna miss number.
Okay.
I, I say number three.
Number three, okay. So this is uh the question for number three. How can we inspire or how can you inspire others to our, to your daily actions, not just uh uh your words? How can you inspire others to your daily actions, not just your words? Over to you, Henry.
Okay, good evening, I can host masters.
Great day.
Okay, so how can we inspire others through our daily action, not just our words? Every time, well, this is a question that is, is actually opposite from my, my, my speech just now. Because just now I said I enjoy silence. Yeah. So, yeah, maybe in daily action, we speak a lot also. And maybe one time we, we may make a promise, which is empty to others. And like, like last time, I make a promise with my friend that. Come, let's go travel around, uh I bring you to, I bring you to Japan, I bring you to China. And then, one day my friend really believed that, really believed my promise and he already prepared all the luggage. And at last I said, I'm just kidding you, I just joke with you. And so at that time, I realized that. Words is just a, a thing that. Can simply say out, but to make the words become practical, we must uh. We must do our preparation, like when we promise to others, we will need to. Uh, put our effort. As putting effort, uh we'll let the others believe, believe your action. You believe that your promise is trustworthy. And this will also illuminate, illuminate the others. By making an empty promise. So. Back to the question, how can we inspire others through our daily action, not just our words, is we need to. We need to make a preparation and take our effort to uh give others to trust, to trust us, yeah, that's all for me.
Okay, that was inspiring, Henry. So you remind me uh that people don't remember what we say, right? And uh people always remember that what we, we can do, okay? So now, uh, any other volunteer? Who is it?
Our best neighbor Tommy.
You know, my guy.
Number six.
Number six, okay.
Good for vision.
Okay, this is the questions upon number six. Okay, if you could create a movement to spread light in the world, what will, what would it be? Again, if you could create a movement to spread, to spread light in the world, what would it be?
Good evening, everyone. So uh if you could create a movement to spread light in the world, what would it be? So the movement that I would like to take up here, the way that a knowledge that can be provided to the people. That can be a part of a movement, it can be a knowledge that can guide them into a better life. It can be anything, but knowledge that can help them in the above, on their day to day things, unlocking some knowledge that require. For them acquire material gain as well as spiritual gain. So these are the things that probably I will look into it, in a way that I strongly believe knowledge able to unlock. And bring people to next level, and people used to say knowledge is the power. So definitely that will be the movement that to spread the light, which I should take up. And that can be something that I can offer to society and to the people in a way that uh give them the best knowledge. They require to keep improving themselves. This can be anything, this can be a knowledge, uh can be a knowledge that uh enable them to understand something that very difficult. And also something that they can, they, they can be enlightened spiritually or even materially. So that people, people strike a right balance to their life. And as, as a human, we also think it's a lot of things that can be stressful. And knowledge to manage the stress, knowledge to manage the time, knowledge even to manage themselves in the most best way. So that they can bring out the best out of them. So uh that will be the movement I will spread and the movement named okay, knowledge. Which branches to so many things, can be spiritual, can be material, it can be a management of themselves to be a better person in future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, okay? You show us how uh your idea can inspire hopes and change. So, we proceed to our next questions. So now just left uh one, four and five, number one, number four and number five. Anybody or online uh those master member also can volunteer for this table topic?
I want number.
Four, number four, okay. So this is the questions for number four. Describe a person who is, who inspire your heart and how they have impacted you. This is my uh, my favorite question actually. Describe a person who inspire your heart and how they have impacted you, you.
Last point, right?
Thank you, Jana. Nine years ago. Star one, they hide me me. And when I turn around. I s- I saw him fell on my head, drop on the table. Immediately his head bleeding. When that time I was so scared. Because I saw my son with bleeding head. On that night, I sent him to the hospital. The doctor stitched five stitches on his head. I was so guilty. One year later. I can say that the whole year I didn't skip round. Every night, I was, I was asleep, I would immediately suddenly wake up in the middle of the night. I was so guilty about this incident. After one year, one day, I sit with him inside the car. I told him, B, I'm so sorry about that incident. He suddenly turned at me and looked at me and said, mommy, what is past is past. I forgive you, don't bring this incident to your future. When that time, he was just fine, yes, oh. I was impact by him. He's so small and so he's just a little child, he can say something like this. I'm very proud of him, has a, has a smarter. I cannot admit that I teach him a lot, but I think he's learned a lot from the TV, the big baby boss. He's the one who always reminds me and inspired me in this world. So I want to get this opportunity and say I love you, son, thank you, and back to you, table topic master.
Thank you, Clay, it's touching to hear that. For me, I also want to share my uh, uh, I also want to share the person who inspired me most. Okay, so in my case, my late mother is one of the uh, the, the person who are inspire me the most. Yeah, she, she is the one who makes me, like, uh, who makes me uh like. Uh what I have uh today, okay, so. So next, maybe last questions, anybody want to try for the online?
Max, can I try?
Max? Or ifs? Ifs, do you want to try?
Mask Mahendran.
Okay, mask Mahendran, eh, you want to try? We only have uh question number, let me check first. Number six, right?
No choice.
Number one, yes, then.
Number one, yeah, I give you number one, is it okay?
Okay, oh.
Yeah, okay, so for number one, can you share a moment when someone's kindness lead up your darkest day? Can you share a moment when someone's kindness lead up your darkest day?
Okay, to, to start with this uh question, uh, a moment when someone kindness lead up uh my darkest day. I think one of my, I, I won't consider this as the darkest, darkest day, but uh one moment was to know uh my first daughter. My first child, she is diagnosed with autism. And to know that at the age of four. Um, after maybe observing her a couple of years, from the age she was two, three, uh, there was always a sign. That some kind of sign to show that she, she was a bit. I would say a bit less normal, but then it took us, because uh when discussing with family members. You always get this uh feedback from them that, you know, time, as time goes on, she will need to. But then at, there was a point where we realized it, uh that. That she, she was not normal and then we had to get her diagnosed. And that was, uh, once we know that she, she had autism, I, I felt really. Yeah, it was a, it was a tough time for myself and for my wife. But, and then eh, we, we tried to keep that news away from our family, because we didn't want them to feel bad as well. Um, but then one, one of my family member or related, uh far related. Somehow he, he noticed that, because my, my daughter looks very normal from the outside, but. And he kind of figured out that she had that issue and he, and he actually spoke to me. And he gave me some advice and the first thing he said is not to, not to be, you don't have to keep it a secret. You can, you know, just, just be open and share that. And since, since then, I think I've been very open uh regarding my daughter's condition. And I felt that, that stress kind of relieved uh myself from, from, from that. From that moment, from that 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 this moment and. I would say that that kindness that he had to to come and uh directly ask me that question. Um and then to know what I'm going through, I think that's that's the moment. Uh someone kindness lead up my darkest time, I would say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh Max for moving story. So I am sorry to hear that, but the autism is not an illness, but that one is a special gift gift for the God. So I think that's all for table topic today. Over to you, T M E, Jojo.
Thank you, Jama, for your and and catchy and also very fun session today. I believe all the members are very excited, just alright? Yes, say yes, okay, I'll speak next time. And next, I would like to invite our timer to give a table topic speaker kind of report, please.
So the first table topic speaker, Kyo Titi spoke for one minute fifty seven second. And me, Henry Charles, spoke for two minutes twenty two second. And Dejan spoke for one minute fifty second. Claire Tans spoke for two minutes thirty three second and Max spoke for two minutes and forty four second.
So who are it is you were for the parties?
Alright, so. So Max has exceeded the time we so Max is not eligible for the voting session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, our timer for your very interesting part. And next, we will move it to break times for the short break finally. Before that, can I invite all the physical members to come in front of stage and take a group photo? And meanwhile, our aligning members, please put out your video and we'll take the video, we'll take a photo together as well.
Okay, everyone is the. On the zoom, I want to take a picture. Okay, look at me, Max, Lo and Max, can you get the camera? Okay, one picture first. One, two, three. Okay, one more time, huh? Hey, faster, faster. I want to take together.
Oh, where are you?
No, 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 wait, don't need to, don't need to on behind. Okay, squeeze, 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 squeeze. Okay, squeeze, squeeze a little bit first, we take the. Alright, okay, wait that, can you squeeze a little bit first? Melon, you stay behind please. Okay, okay, one, okay, one, so everybody zoom, ready, please? Yes, okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Short break, short break.
Five minutes short break.
Hi, please, hello, everyone, you all are back. Hi, bye, everybody.
Nobody. And on the screen. Yeah.
Okay, you hold on, huh? Hello, everyone, Max, you are back. How are you, Max?
Okay, I remember, yes, we are back. Okay, members, how was the food?
Nice, delicious.
Delicious, right? Okay, so the hot bed now time, that's Mahendran, Emma, Javah, Maslo. And also Chinyi can drive us in physical, we will prepare very delicious dishes and tip record you all. Okay, and hope to see you in next meeting, oh, sorry, in next man physical meeting. And now. We will move it to third essential part in Toastmaster meetings, which is evolution sessions. Before we start it, so I would like to encourage everyone to vote for the best speaker. And also for the best speaker and also best paper topic speaker, please pick a food and scan by. You can scan the. QR code, everyone. You may down your boom if you have that the body.
Done.
That, okay.
I'm done.
Great. Now, feedback is the breakfast of the trip bit. It very say it's the heart of the Toastmaster education program. Giving and receiving trusty feedback and pusher so all of can become better and better speakers. For this, I would like to invite our general evaluator to meet the evaluation session. Please help me to welcome our distinguished Toastmaster, Melon Law on stage, over to you.
Thank you for our energetic P and E Jojo tonight. Good evening. Better postmaster, no guest today. Before I begin my general evaluation sections, I would like to take a moment to express my heartfelt. Thanks to our president and the team who have moved everything to this new venue. As one of the founder of this club, I feel truly caught and touched. By the dedications and teamwork shown by our members. To express my gratitude, I would like to present this small token to the club. For the people of every stations and accomplishments to continue growing together. May I invite presidents?
Wow, thank you.
And this is your your general evaluator for tonight's meeting, what is my role? Today, my role is to observe the overall meeting highlights, these strengths and shares suggestions for improvement. Evaluation, evaluation is not about fighting foul. But he's about helping one another grow. I would be calling on a team to execute me, they are timer, our counter, grand moriets. Evaluator with easy feedback to our speaker and I will evaluate. The entire meeting as well at the end. It is important to give to get your message across in the a lot time. And for the meeting to run according to schedule, our timer, Henry, with you, please. Display the Chinese sequence for our evaluators. First, the green light will come on at two minutes, the yellow light at two and a half minutes. But the red light at three minutes. And. We end up, the speaker will wrap up his speech and he. I still usually go back to his place. And now. We shall start the evaluations sessions first. Evaluate. Then we now move on to the evaluation segment. At this evening, we have three evaluators who will share their feedback on the speeches presented by our speakers. Now, please coming. Now, please coming welcome our first evaluator, Jojo De, strategy relationship trust change to Reggie. Sorry. Reggie, Reggie.
Benning. And then we need the ship home.
Reggie, uh, by the way, leadership for who will be evaluating our first speaker. First speaker is hostmaster Henry Cha, Henry Cha. Reggie, over to you.
Thank you for our G to invite me for the evaluation. So, first of all, congratulations, congratulations for our Henry. Why I say so? Because it's the purpose of this project, introduction to the vocal variety and also body language. And, and for the first thing, I realized that I really like your, your storytelling, your, your, your construct, your speech in a story. You have a great opening, which is just, you mentioned that you are sitting alone and thinking that I, I enjoy the silence at that moment. And then after that, when you back to the phone, you realize that I felt I cannot continue like that afterward. And also your, your brain's not being, you're looking at the ceiling and then think that, wow, what it could be in the future. So after that, your story, after you recorded, and then you have the action to train that. And, and the action you also have enjoyed that the action, uh, your conversation with each other. And at the end, you give us the moral of the story. So this is a very good storytelling for us. You've got, uh, we know that what is the behind the story, what you're making a chance. And also at the end, why you're, uh, what is the outcome you're getting? So you're doing great in the constructive content in the speech. So again, I like that it's your ice contact. So when you're, when you pretend you're giving your speech, you look at other. Sometimes you look at me, sometimes you look at your job, sometimes at me. So this is the ice contact is the audience. So audience will give a, a connection with you, it will give focus to you. So this is a very great job, would be. And third thing, I is the purposeful movement, uh, when you're giving some example, especially when you mention, uh, when before you sleep, you're looking at the ceiling, looking at that. So this is the most full movement that, let us have a picture into your speech. So very great job this. And if you go for, you go to the area of improvement, I realize that, uh, when you're giving the speech, when you start standing here, there was some anticipation of the front, which is you're, you're sitting here, you're trying to have something like this. Uh, so which is, uh, I realize of this and you can, by you deliver this wish in the last time you can try to realize that, uh, as you reduce of this movement, you will feel like, uh, uh, it could be better if you didn't have this, this kind of anticipation of the work. And also at the end, I, I believe you'll write your script and then you'll try to memorize that. Uh, if you're, for for your script, uh, nobody will know that you can just, uh, you can just create or just, uh, continue in your own wood, not need to all, of the wood, follow your own script. Uh, this is my suggestion for you. So overall, uh, I like your speech, I like your storytelling and also your subjective project. Well, and I would like to challenge you to reduce an intentional move in your next mission. And also I'd like to hear more about your story at the next mission. And thank you and over to our chief.
Thank you, Reggie. What actually I appreciate about our first speaker is his wonderful initiative to reach out from our, from all works of life. It shows warm, open and genius interest in others. Well done. And move on. I would like to invite our second evaluator, hostmaster DJ. DJ is going to evaluating second speaker for Max Law. Say Max Law, Max Law. Now, your space is yours.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, yeah, so I will reading the speech from Max Law on introduction to vocal variety and body language with the topic taken or David by Max Law. So eventually I enjoyed very well. In fact, the first startup is talking about, we start to speak about with a valuable question on the stress. And this is a very much a very question in a way, in a way that we're giving this credit for. I think that was very nice and it's give a light at the end of the tunnel. At first, whenever the first speech came on. And that's also illuminate the next level of how you deliver this speech. The body movement and the language very engaging. I think he managed to, uh, bring up the character very lively whenever he delivered the speech and manage to distinguish between two roles, the young man, the fisherman, when they communicating to each other, that was very engaging and it's, it keep the intact voice to follow his features very well. And the role play between these two character also has been given very, very precisely. It doesn't give any doubt of differences. I mean, very doubt of, uh, a clear distribution of two different spread of entity that align in the story. That was area of very well been done. On some of the area, probably Max Law, if you look at it, the time management, probably one of the area, we need to have much more attention and compact the delivery of the speech within the time to ensure it managed to give the most out of it, uh, fruitful speech to the people. And on other hand, too much of body movement may distract or may divert the focus on the action of the body. So that is the my observation from the start until the end, the body movement is, is keep happening. I think probably this good, but it can be also diverting the people focus into the more on the body, body movement rather than get into the speed and the message trying to deliver. And another area probably we can, he can improve further, link back the initial question on the stress, which he had talked about to the end of the story to give a close to as a well, uh, well story that which able to give a last, a good conclusion out of it. And also to, to challenge further, probably Max can bring out the story more impactfully and timely so that that able to give uh, much more well content to the people, they would understand the whole idea of the storytelling that Max Law making in this. As well probably using a pro such like a fisherman hat, false mustache, where probably can be more engaging while you do that role play. And that's all. Anyway, I enjoy the speech. Thanks for the great speech from Max. Thank you.
To me, our second speaker wonderfully emphasized the power of progress from this that's either, right? Our third speaker, second speaker, speech, take it or leave it was born confidence and hot, provoking, provoking, encouraging us to make choice with convictions. Well done. And now, I would like to invite our third speaker, White Line Hope, presentation mastery for two, he's going to evaluate our third our third speaker, the speaker Emma, the speaker Emma for his first speech. The power of progress from classroom to global stages always be good. Well.
Thank you for our audience speaker, Emma. Well, you did diverse and inspiring speech and it is truly illuminating. And throughout the hostess present, I would like to share five elements in your speech that illuminated us. That is the one shared. So now, you highlight the importance, address the audience, use the repeatable words and emotions. First, how you stand up in your speech is to arrive with your speech status, you give your speech in such as physical, loud and energetic voice. And that where we engage the audience from the start. Well done, Emma. Second, you address the audience, you did a well interactions with the audience by asking any one of you make a difference in other life. And also you ask, who could you be inspiring for the next? And the one people talk, the one thing people like more than talking about themselves is hearing about themselves. You did a good job when you interact with the audience and also you use the repeatable phrases. And I like how you're using this. I can do this. I can do this. And I also can do this. And you use the words, every speaker is ready to shine, not reaching the top, but lifting others. They help me repeat it in my head and then I can repeat it to other people. Well done. For the improvement areas, I would suggest throughout your speech, you've mentioned quite excessive part of the story and I would suggest you could simplify it into a dialogue with your students, probably two to three story. And it will help to add the sparks in your stories by telling the funny part, the tedious parts and the cherished part of your story. And also lastly, you could amplify your emotions throughout the speech. I would advise you to slow down your pace, allow some silence, and you will in illuminate your emotions more clearly. And also, there is your emotion with different situation. Example, when you facing the problem, you should have determination, you greet your hands. And when you are in curiosity, you open your palm. Why I like this saying? And when you are acceptance, it's alright, as I said, overall, you did a good job. And I hope to see your next speech. Thank you.
Well done, well done, Michael. Anyway, Emma, her message was clear, inspiring and full of positive energy. Now, we have already end our, our evaluations sessions. So now I would like to invite our timers before it's time for Henry, Henry.
So, I know present you the evaluation timer report. So for the first interviewer, who is in, spoke for three minutes and forty seconds. Uh, DJ spoke for three minutes and thirteen seconds. Boy, I love spoke for three minutes and twenty-five seconds.
So it's a result.
Unfortunately, Reggie is not eligible for the voting session.
One percent.
Yeah, one percent.
One percent not.
I hope three, three minutes and fifty seconds.
Okay. So only one, huh? Only one. Yeah. Thank you, thank you, timer. Now, I would like to move on for our conference report. Conference report will be preparing by
Emma.
Emma, Emma. Oh, I see. Hostmaster, Emma.
Hold up, sorry. Hey. Oh, okay. Pass to Chuni already.
Oh, I see.
I got that.
Oh.
Emma, I'll go pass to you the result. Okay.
Uh, uh, with the box. And so the first one, the essay, you'll tell me one, one per thirteen, so others two, so total seventeen. Consider Reggie. Are six, two, two, uh, three, so five. Fifty-one, one, total seventeen purchase. So, Kenny, Jojo. Fifty-one, who she found others, who I see, which is total five. Our timer, Henry. Uh, six, one, so one year, total six. Our grand jury, next, one per. Oh, sorry, just now, our first speaker, uh, Henry. One per. Eight, so fifty-one. Seven. So, just now, for five, so it is one is total one, twenty-one. And our second speaker, Max Law. Three per one, others per year, total four, purchase. Our third speaker, Emery Rogers. Our table topic master, Java. Five and six, uh, one, okay, so total seven. Our first. Um, second, evaluator, DJ, two per four, and two half for, for the six, our goal of, uh, no causes. So with, uh, back to you, uh, how we generate.
Thank you, thank you. Our third, objecting, and we look forward to and like to invite other real variance. Our real variance, the next, my reverence, presentation mastery one, he will be presenting today's report for the overall good usage of bad usage and the word of the days who use illuminate the most and he will be giving a gift to them. Is it over the year, Max?
Thank you, Madam General EValuator. Fellow Toastmasters and guests, my report is as follows. Can I, I'll, I'll share my screen. Are you able to see the the Excel file? Hello. Can you guys see the Excel file?
Yes, bro, we can see it.
Ah, great, great. Uh, so.
Maybe, maybe you can tell me bigger.
When bigger. Okay, so the, for the usage of word and idiom of the day, Jojo used it two times, I combined both of. Jojo used it two times, Henry used it three times, Emma the most, used it six times. Chunyi one time, Vijay twice and Lihok twice. Some mispronunciation that I observed for the word tunnel. It was pronounced as tunnel, so the actual, the real, the correct pronunciation should be tunnel. And then the word moment was pronounced as woman. So the correct pronunciation is moment. And then horizon, it was pronounced as horizon, the right pronunciation is horizon. And some improper grammatical, grammatical users, keep distance from me, should be keeping distance from me. Or we use a lot of me also, me also, you can use me too instead. Me too, or I do too, instead of me also. And it was happened to me. The, the right phrase should be, it happened to me. What I want to go to should be where I want to go to. I sit with him in the car, based on the context, it should been, I sat with him in the car. Congratulations to our Henry should be congratulations to our Henry or any names. Then to evaluating or any tool with work, it should be the best form of the word. So in this case should be to evaluate. And then some excellent use of English, Henry said, I, I hid behind a wall. My feet feels heavy like it's pulling me backwards. They gave me the warmest smile. Emma said, progress is not about perfection, it's about transformation. They found light in my classroom. The journey was never about fame. Every strand of hair, there is a shine of confidence. Jama said, light symbolizes hope and power of positivity. People may not remember what we say, but remember what we do. Vijay said, striking the right balance and also bring out the character very lively. Claire said, what is past is past. Waging, audience give focus and attention to you and purposeful movement. And Lihok, we amplify your emotions. With that, I give it back to you, General E evaluator, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for your deep use and support that your voice, your speech, and the report today. Thank you. And now thanks again for all of you keeping the spirits of Toastmaster alive in our new home. Look at this new venue. Are you excited?
Yeah.
But I would like to, to express to our president trying to invite them physical meeting since we have this such a wonderful place, why not? Yes, it's pity, it's pity. Invite all of our members to attend physical meeting instead of hybrid. If you cancel hybrid means all of us attend together. And this is how we useful, fully utilize this place. Otherwise we pay fully, but we don't use fully of it. Right now, yeah?
Yes.
This is what I would like to express to you. Let me now share my feedback on the role players and meeting segments now. First, Toastmaster of the evening, Jojo. Jojo, I thought you are the last our new member who is going to replace the PME, right?
Yes.
Yeah, why, what happened to him?
He, he's there, so he can't do that.
So Jojo is always the backup. You also here, very good. What's the, what's your role, Edie?
B P.
B P. Our T M E, you did a very fantastic job because you're managing the meeting flow with confidence and wall. Because what you want, you will do it. You do it as you, as you like. Hmm, thank you so much for your, for your efforts. The transitions were small and this energy remain consistent. But one of the suggestions is consider giving a short summary after each sessions to help all our members follow along.
Hmm, okay.
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much for our T M E, your efforts, you're always follow. I have a thought, are you coming, are you attending the meeting? When I, when I receive a call.
That now be happy.
Anyway, thanks for your invitation so that I can join this meeting happily. Second, Emma Topics Master, the topics, who is that? Jama, Jama, Jama. Ross, Ross, Ross Nina, is it? Jama, she created enjoyable and engaging impromptu speaking sessions. These topic will create even encourage participations, but what suggestion says Jama, Jama.
Yes.
I would like to, I would like to suggest this. When you, when you, when you speak up the fighter. When you speak up the fighter, maybe you can mention what's the fighter twice and who is the participant so that they can follow easily. Jama, are you there?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Uh, this is what a little, little suggestions. Well done. And third, our prepared speaks, speakers deliver their speeches with enthusiasm and preparations. Especially our Emma spend for more than twenty minutes to deliver her speech, but she's still in the very enthusiasm and patience to get our, our, our audience connections, engaging and give us a very good inspirations. Inspired by a teacher who changed her student from a poor school to global stage. Well done, and I really admire as a teachers like Emma. Thank you so much. Over our evaluators, evaluators made constructive and encouraging feedback. Their evaluations were clear and well structured and Vijay, Vijay and our Lihok, our president, especially Lihok. He always presented with body actions, vocal variety that really engaging our audience and we enjoy her event, his evaluations, right? Beijing, so pity you go over time. Now, timer, our counter, the Mariens photographer and John Master all supported the meeting efficiently, the clear and careful reports. Registrar and subject accounts that ensure the meeting started on time and not really untied. Because of some pickup from the first beginning, right? Maybe we can spend
earlier.
Earlier, yeah, earlier before twenty minutes. So that we can on time, what's the time now?
Yes.
Nine thirty, ten o'clock, you're still on time, especially when paper topic sections, we've already timer adjusted, I adjusted to nine thirty-five. Like before nine thirty-five, they already cut off or paper topic sections. This is how we monitor and adjust the back the timing sequence. If six persons is more than the time, timing sequence, you can cut off to one, to five. So that we can adjust back the, and this is how we monitoring the timing sequence for the schedule meeting. Thank you for all behind the scenes support, it is truly thanks to people. Even though we do not have many members to attend our meeting today. But it's supposed to attend all, invite our all members to attend this first meeting. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the first meeting.
Can we try?
Suppose I do not want to attend this meeting, but since this is the first meeting for this new home. That's why fortunately, I took this role and I presented. Just to encourage all of our own members today. What happened to other members? And they all, they cannot attend, even Max, I thought I got something discussions with him, but unfortunately, he was absent, okay, absent. Yeah. I think overall, the next meeting was truly inspiring, feel with him work. Despite not many members attended. But we really learning with a positive energy. Each role player contributed to making this meeting a success. And together we have shown what makes our club so special, special because of recently we moved our club to a new place, new venue. I know, I understand, in between in between, you all really suffer, especially especially Claire. Claire, Lee, right? She coordinate, coordinating with our friend man. In myself, because of that, you have to leave it, you have to accommodate, accommodate. I, because of financial, so, but you really, really put your effort to lead our members and working together with our president. Thank you so much. And thank you so much, our project and our meeting and our president's efforts. And even Lihok, he came from so far away, all the way from Bhutan, yeah?
Yes.
As we settle into this new venue, let's continue to support, encourage and learn from one another. Just, we have always done, continue and maybe next month only, right, next month only. We will invite all our members come together, join together and have fun in this meeting. You okay?
Okay, yes.
Agree?
Yeah.
With that, thank you once again to everyone for your dedication and enthusiasm. Let's keep the Toastmaster spirit shining brightly in our new home. Thank you so much and back to you, T M E.
Thank you, January, if I didn't mention more for your disciple and also variable evaluations, I believe all of us already take on that and also will practice and improve in our next meeting. So we encourage every members to attend the meeting physically, enjoy the movement, enjoy the food together. And next, I would like to invite everyone to vote for the best event. Alright, everyone there? Five, four, three, two, one, time stop. Let's move on to our next awards presentations. Of our space C, every members they have their well preparations on their previous speech. So, and also, and also they practice and practice in every paper topic session. So now let's see who is the winner, the best speaker today. First, we were announced the best speaker today, the best speaker goes so I like to invite president, Gwaii on stage and also Henry here. Congratulations. Congratulations to Henry. He's going to shine for, I love you. I love your entry season and also always step up from the present good. And next we'll watch for the, and next I, I shall announce the best paper topic speaker. The best topic speaker goes to because she definitely played that. Congratulations. Yes.
One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
Thank you. And to have a paper topic session, yeah, also one of the winner. Try again in next meeting. Next, we shall announce the best eventer today, the best eventer today goes to Yes, why always that, try, try again.
One, two, three, four, one, two.
Thank you for offer, the best eventer, the best paper topic master and paper topic speaker. And next, we are moving to activity announcement. Members. You will have our, on eighteen of October, which is coming Sunday, we will have such a Damar Toastmaster Club gathering. It's not, no slack here, but you can see the agenda, okay? We will have a gathering in Raven House. So welcome all the members to join, the time from eleven o'clock morning until three o'clock afternoon. So join us, eat the cake, okay? And also something special on that, we will prepare many, many quotes. And next, the next event will be on twenty fifth of October, the late legend. Here it is, yes, is our, is a hall of friends, a dry celebration dinner by the chief chair. And welcome to join and let us know if you would like to join, if you haven't registered. We, our card, the receipt, token and also award. If our card received a token and also awards today, let's celebrate together. And next, just for your informations, you can see further agenda. On trump of November, we will have a speaker talk. If you would like to complete, to complete your level, your pathway. Or you want to go for triple crown or clear level five, join the speaker talk and present your speech, deliver your speech today. Tell me you want to register and tell me you want to register and I will reserve a slot for you. Next. There is all the activity and next. Uh, you know, you know player solutions. Yes. And let's invite Claire.
We have one more announcements for the speech craft. Our speech class already set on December of thirteen of December and fourteen of December. I would like to ask everyone if you can be a law player or a vicinity data. But for the speaker, I already invite three or yes, sorry, for Max, John Maxwell. Thirty feet, thirty five trainer from all the way to K L. And second speaker will be C P Law from K L also, our last district director. And next will be Q J, they all already come forward me. So thirteen of December and fourteen, they, they December, they will come here to help us for the speech craft. So if you have a friend or you yourself want to join the speech craft also can. But the, uh, my, the fair I haven't covered yet, so I will let you guys know later on. But if all members, we just charge a very minimal fees for the meal, meals allowance only is not very expensive. So I encourage you all come and join the speech from you never joined the scrap before. Okay, we are the speaker is the best speaker in Toastmaster. I have already asked them to come, so if you can, if you can, then join the speech from, alright? Thank you.
No, I mean, they were, uh, they were organized as speech craft, but our craft we do. So join us and save the leads. Next, for role mail session, to be fair, I would like to offer all the stroke for everyone. So for our online member, please get ready your hand and key in the rose you want to find. You want to, uh, keep, you want to take it, okay? Please leave it in comment and next. Okay. Now, I would like to offer for those because if you would like to try for triple crowds, complete three level. Or you want to go for level five, complete one level. Do it, okay, speaker, do it, expect it, okay? Who want to take us because?
For all this.
Yes, for next meeting, online meeting. After probably. Okay, you want to take V J? Okay, V J, congratulations, V J, any others? See the comment. Hamma, yeah, okay, second speaker, Hamma, anyone would like to take for the speaker? Three, two, one, okay, to me. Okay, finally you get it. It's not somehow already research, you know, like because those members who came physically at night. Next, we'll go for evaluator, who would like to try evaluator, you can take double, double road in a day. Don't worry, we let you to learn, to improve, to learn. But we pass the game, how, who wants to try evaluator? Anyone? Tree? Max, Max, would you like to try evaluator? If not, you can try T M E also. Max, and also Max, I had run. Do you have to try evaluator? Okay, right, three, two, one, close. Evaluator, again, three, two, one, close. Okay, move on to our next role. T N E, T N E, practice, practice what, T N E. Show us how you can control and also organize the meeting. Now you like to see, anyone who wants to try T M E? Anyone who would like to try T M E? T M E, T M E, T M E, say you raise your hand.
Oh, no, this one, that is for that.
So it's just open for all of you. How, like, what would you like to try? G E, what? Okay, like for G E, so. Madame, which one will you like to try?
Yeah, it is.
You want T M E?
T M E. But I didn't want it, quite a lot tendency, I cannot become a T M E. But I can see Madame really full preparation in every room. This is what the spirit that we need to learn. Okay, next. Harry, what role you would like to take?
I try to the coffee master.
Okay, the coffee master. Next. Next, I'm ready. What you would like to try? Max.
You want someone, Harry?
You must do.
You must do.
To myself, to myself, okay? Great. And so catching to see rest by hundred come again, I think already three to four man. Baby already three to four months, right? That's okay, you choose to figure, but it's okay, take your time, yeah, always open the door and waiting for you. Yeah, and that's how about next role? Next role, what would you like to try?
You go again.
Because who's wrong?
Do you want to come back you? Do you want to come back you?
Okay, anyone would like to take double job, double role? Double job is not, is, uh, double, double rose, practice your impromptu also is good. Okay, if not, so I think all of the member already a draw or strong. Jama, Jama, you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here, I'm here, I'm sorry next week I can't join the meeting.
Sorry?
Yeah, I can join for this meeting.
Okay.
For the next meeting, okay.
Okay, then see you in the next meeting. Okay, thank you so much for all the, for all, for all the members. And I would like to pass the control back to our president, V J.
Thank you all. Thank you for our T M E handling our, our meeting all abroad today. And also in front of take out this draw. And ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster. First of all, a special thank for all the member that has cared and support for our, to, to help us to move our cloud over here. Thank you for all of this. So I'm happy that, that, uh, we, we are transferring our club. And then a lot of changes for our club that we are moving from the, from the previous place to the new place. And, and this is, uh, it can set a new stone. Uh, and there's a new place there and for the coming month, actually we plan to have our club. Uh, club opening. So, uh, the company physical, company hybrid meeting, we will do the, we will do that in, in a special, special meeting that. And all of us was encouraged come to celebrate in our club together. And, and also, why I love the show crowd number much is because of the. Uh, wish touching me to joining this guy is because of what, uh, the environment. So we shall keep our environment away in our club. And all of you, uh, as we are encouraging to join the physical meeting. And, and we having our new place and try hard to getting the new place done. Is a purpose for us to come in physical. But I understand that some of member that the, the problem only can join it in online. So, uh, in the long term improvement, I truly encourage that to join our meeting in physical. Why I say so? Because online is just facing a screen, but what in physical you can enjoy the station. So the station is prepared for you to enjoy that. You can keep your eyes connected with your audience to look at them. Imagine that you are joining, uh, a public speaking. And facing hundred or thousand people in front. And then what will happen? Do you feel that the difference of course we start from in joining in the physical. Start of storm, enjoying the all of us. So. Though, though I wonder why, what you, uh, we try to recall back why we joining the Toastmaster? And what we wish to achieve in this year? Because we just start our Toastmaster year, uh, after, after four month. And another one month, what you would, what would you like to achieve in that during the whole event or during the annual conference? What is the pin, what is the award you wish to achieve? Not only the physical be, and the most important be is. If you promise yourself to improve in your public speaking, why not try, you spend your time in, in serving on this? So, uh, oh, I'd like to thank all our club member. And wish all of our Indian club member, you have a joyful and blessing, Iwali. And to our no Indian, we also enjoy our holiday. Thank you. So I enjoy our meeting tonight.